The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. If you will please rise as you are able, give your attention to Councilwoman Cleer for the introduction of the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Amago Day Church is a local Wesleyan church congregation located in North Topeka at 1201 Northwest Central Avenue. The church was planted in November of 2011 by two brothers, Joe and Jesse Hodgson, who had a desire and a call to plant a church with a transformational presence in North Topeka community. Within a few short years, the building now houses not only Amago Day Church, but a Spanish-speaking congregation and another church plant that meets on Sunday morning. From the beginning, the mission of Amago Day Church has been to declare the redemptive transformational power of Jesus Christ throughout our community. Reverend Joe Hodgson.
Thank you. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, would we thank you today for your loving kindness, your mercy, your grace, and your favor. Help us to rest in your good and pleasing perfect will and give us strength, courage, and guidance as we lead our communities and as we make decisions that affect our family and neighbors and as we strive to make this city a better place. Lord, I ask for your blessings upon those here tonight that serve you and serve the people that live here in Topeka, Kansas. Lord, your word tells us that they have been established by you, and we thank you for your loving presence that is with us here as thoughts and ideas are expressed, as people are heard, and as decisions are made. Lord, bless this community, this state, this country, and this world. May we strive to live in unity and harmony together as all of us indeed are created in the Amago Day, in your image and likeness, and with inherent purpose, value, and worth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is this time of the year, we know it's fire prevention time, and we have here Fire Chief Duke and Martin, the person who oversees the safety programs. But first, we're going to have an introductory video, short video that describes some of the training programs that our firefighters experience. Well, that gives a good preview to where we'll go over a proclamation here and then have the opportunity for you to tell us a little bit about the programs going on. Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas residential fires in the city of Topeka have killed 14 people in the last five years, and the fire department has responded to over 1,000 structured fires in the last five years. And whereas the Topeka Fire Department has installed over 2,000 free smoke alarms in order to keep our citizens safe, and whereas city of Topeka firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas a 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned two ways out, plan and practice your home fire escape plan. Now therefore, I, Larry Welgass, Mayor of the city, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8 to 14, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. And Chief, would you like to describe a little bit more of your activities?
Yes, this upcoming weekend, Saturday, the 14th, we have an open house at Fire Administration Station 3, which is at Bike 4th and Jefferson. We invite the general public to come out there and view how firefighters on a daily basis train and the equipment they use and get a visit with us and talk about the job, maybe a career. And also, there will be refreshments and hot dogs for everybody that attends.
That sounds good. And I wanted to mention the video was repaired by our Communications Department, Molly Hadfield, and our videographer, Travis Bronson. Thank you and look forward to a good weekend coming up. Thank you. There are no presentations, so we'll proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Welgass.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Cleer.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
De La Isla.
Here.
Jensen.
Present.
Schwartz.
Cohen.
Here.
And Harmon.
There are no additions or deletions to the agenda, and Council, we will have one executive session at the conclusion of the meeting. So we'll proceed with consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber authorizing the serving of complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal malt beverage for the First Friday Art Walk event to be held at various businesses as sponsored by Arts Connect, Inc. B is approval of a workers' compensation settlement for Stephen A. Watkins in the amount of $52,000. C are minutes of the regular meeting of October 3rd, 2017, and there are no applications.
Okay, that is the consent agenda. Councilman Jensen moves to approve. Councilwoman Cleer seconds. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, consent agenda is approved. Go to the action items. A, resolution.
A is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Doug Gerber approving the distribution of the fourth quarterly payment of $67,500 to the Topeka Performing Arts Center.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As the body knows, last year you adopted a resolution using some excess funds from the General Fund to allocate up to $300,000 to the Topeka Performing Arts Center. Those payments were to be made in four equal distributions of $67,500 with the potential at the end of calendar year 2017 of an additional $30,000 if T-PAC met their metrics. This evening, we present to you the fourth distribution equalling, making for a total of $270,000, and we would stand for any questions you might have.
Other questions on this resolution? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. So if I'm reading the report correct, it does not appear that they will meet their metrics at the end of the year unless they can pull in a lot in the last quarter. Is that your understanding as well? Mr. Mayor and Councilman, in the reading of the report, that's how I would read it as well. I know our Finance Director's had conversations with them, and I think she would concur with that assessment at this point in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Your pleasure. Councilman, go ahead. Councilwoman Cleer.
So did they just finish their third quarter or second quarter? Is there, on January to January? So would they just finish third?
The last one. Go ahead, Nancy. Sorry, so this is the fourth payment that we're making to them, but it's reflective of their numbers through their third quarter?
So this is our last payment?
Yes, other than the incentivized $30,000 payment.
Okay, and actually, the payments didn't exactly follow on quarters, but it's the last one so that we use, which would be when, as of the last quarter, these are the figures we have. Isn't that correct? Yeah. Other questions? Your pleasure. Councilwoman Cleer.
Move to approve.
She moves to approve. Okay, Councilwoman Ortiz, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor vote yes, opposed vote no.
We have eight yes, Mr. Cohen voting no.
Eight having voted yes, the resolution is approved. That completes the action items for this evening. Go to the non-action items. The clerk would read the first discussion.
A is an update on the pavement management program and discussion on planned program activities.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As Mr. Peak is coming forward for his presentation, a brief overview for you. We haven't talked about streets for a couple of months, so we didn't want you to miss out on that opportunity and figured you all wanted to talk about streets a little bit. So in all seriousness, we wanted to get in front of you and talk about how we're moving forward in the next couple of budget years, how we see the projects happening in the scope and in terms of our comprehensive pavement maintenance plan. That's, of course, maintenance, reconstruction, and temporary fixes. So Mr. Peak's going to walk through those three items, and he will try to address any questions you might have.
Okay, Mr. Peak.
Thank you for having me. So as interim City Manager indicated, I'm going to give you an update on the program. And just so we keep talking the same language, how did we get to this program update? Last year, we started with a talk about what is the condition of our streets. And so this image or map reflects kind of that condition score of all our streets within the city of Topeka. This was done in 2016. It's available on the website if any of the people watching want to go out and find out what their street is rated. And it's very important in an asset management program that we kind of know where we are. And then through discussions with the governing body, we kind of set an expectation or a goal of where we want to be. And we talked about that pavement condition index or PCI. We're currently at a 55. And through that discussion, we said over the next 10 years, we want to increase that at a minimum to a 60, if not exceed that aspiring for a 70. And so the governing body, through the approval of the 2018 CIP, as well as the operating budget money towards that goal, basically so that we're maintaining the average annual funding of a little over $24 million annually over the next 10 years to help us achieve that goal. So just want to kind of refresh of that's where we're coming from. The other change in what we're doing in pavement management, we talk a lot about projects during CIP, but the importance of a pavement management program is we talk about strategies and how we invest the dollars that the community gives us to reach those pavement management goals. And within that, there's really kind of three primary strategies I wanted to talk about. We invest in preventative maintenance. So kind of up at the top left of the screen, that's what, you know, crack seal, you see the black sealant along the lines of the pavement. That's a early and often type of treatment, but there are other preventative maintenance treatments we do, full width surface sealing and some other things. On the right-hand side, we have full-depth repairs. This also includes things like pothole repairs and what we call stopgap measures. Sometimes these don't do anything to improve the overall condition of the pavement, but they fix an immediate hazard. If we had a big pothole that someone may damage their vehicle or trip or fall, those types of things we fix. But then we also have full-depth repairs that we're doing strategically. We're going in and patching in one year, and then maybe in the next year, coming back and doing a more structural repair over the entire part of that road. And then on the bottom of the slide, we have kind of the two major repairs, and this is what the community's most familiar with. We kind of have what we call rehabilitation activities on the bottom left. That would include things like mill and overlay where we remove, grind off the amount of the surface and replace that. So that's a structural repair that adds significant life back to roadway. And then on the right-hand side, we have reconstruction. We have a lot of roads that the most cost-effective strategy is to replace them. And then we also need to coordinate that with all our other utility partners, both public and private, to make sure we're renewing that underground infrastructure at the same time. In order of cost, preventative maintenance is very cheap compared to rehab and reconstruction. The analogy I like to use with you folks is about car maintenance. You know, you buy a new car, you got to change the oil early and often. That extends the life. That's what we're talking about, preventative maintenance. Rehab, ultimately, you got to replace tires or brakes. That's more costly, but needed. And ultimately, at some point, you're replacing that car. It's reached its useful life. So that's just kind of a general summary of, we've taken that goal, the budget dollars you've given, and then we're looking at these strategies. And then I wanted to walk you through our process, how we ultimately get to the projects that the citizens see out in the community. And so we call this our project development process. I'm going to start in the upper right with kind of number one. We talked about that. We have our pavement condition scores. We kind of know what that baseline is. And then as we complete projects, we have to go in and update. This is within a software model of this information. We run basically scenarios that generates the output. So as we complete a project, we renew that pavement or we do preventative maintenance, we input that information into the model because it affects that PCI score. Then the next step is we take the budgets that are approved by you, and we load those in to this model. We set the PCI goals, so what's the aspiration, that level of service we're working towards. And then we also put in the planned pavement CIP projects. So we've got a number of projects that are fixed. The voters approved the countywide sales tax. That listed very specific projects that we're doing. As we get into the sort or the neighborhood planning, those neighborhoods may pick very specific projects as part of their neighborhood plan. And so these are fixed projects that we need to load in there. And then basically, we run the model. And what that is, is it's an algorithm that's looking at what budget's available, what goals, what work do you have planned, and out of that, what recommendations for fixing pavement. And so in a sense, this model is kind of siloed. It's not looking at what the utility department is doing or other providers. It's just looking at that pavement. And so it provides recommendations for us to look at, implement those projects, and then ultimately update the model and do this cycle on an annual basis. So with all that being said, I wanted to kind of bring you up to date where we are with the pavement management program. We included two maps within your project. This first map is what we call the preventative maintenance projects. So these are the things that I will be doing, crack sealing, full width surface sealing, and there will be some patching done as part of this process. Let me educate you on what the map represents. So the green, yellow, and red colored streets, those are the project locations over the time period of 2017, 2020 that we will be doing this major preventative maintenance work. As a matter of fact, we're taking bids open tomorrow for the first phase of crack sealing, the 2017 crack sealing program, which is kind of in the center area. We divided the city into three packages over these three years, and the rationale behind that is when we get contractors bidding, it's more efficient if the work is centralized in a location, that we don't have them going from one side of town to the other. So we tried to geographically package these into similar areas. And then some of the outline areas, we're actually going to have our internal folks do some of the crack sealing out there so that we get better bid prices on this. But basically, we'd be working from the center in 2017, 2018. We'd be working the preventive maintenance program kind of on the eastern and northern part of the community, 2018, 2019, and then the south and the western part of the community in 2019 and 2020. In total, this covers about 225 lane miles of pavement over the next three years. That's about 14% of our pavement system. And so just keep that 225 in your mind as we talk about the next slide. But I wanted to stop and see if there were any questions on preventative maintenance slide here.
Do the three divisions, are they, have about the same amount of street miles in each, or so we're not favoring one area over the others?
Yes, sir. You know, the governing body designated the excess countywide sales tax funding approximately $10 million towards this effort. So we basically loaded that as 3.3 million annually. How much work could that buy? And that's basically how the division of work got packaged. The other thing I forgot to mention is, like I said, we're opening bids on crack sealing. It's a kind of a fall-spring process. So in the fall, we're doing major crack sealing work, and then in the spring, we're doing the full width surface sealing. So we're basically getting these roads prepped to come in and have the full width surface sealing. Councilor Emerson mentioned it several meetings ago. We did a demo project in the Central Park neighborhood where you basically have a paving machine that comes down, puts down a very thin layer of an asphalt product that seals the entire surface, and it buys us seven to 10 years of extra life on that pavement, you know, in a ballpark range of $4 a square yard, you know, which is four times less the cost of, say, a mill and overlay, and somewhere in the neighborhood of six times less the cost of the full reconstruction. So it's a very good investment of our dollars extending 225 lane miles, buying another seven to 10 years before any major works needed. And if we do this on a regular basis, some of these roads, you can continue this preventative maintenance process with only minor patching for, you know, 15, 20 years out.
Good, thank you. Questions? Councilman Jensen.
Thank you. So the roads that are not covered under this program, am I to assume that those are going to need more intensive care than just the preventative maintenance?
So yes, some of those. As we talked about in that goal of reaching that PCI 60, we still have what is called the backlog, streets that really the most cost-effective investment is reconstruction.
Okay.
And even at the end of 10 years, we're going to still have streets that need reconstruction.
Sure.
But reaching that goal of 70 helps us to start eat away at that backlog and knock it out. We also have, I mean, the other part we'll show is the major work and replacement kind of covers some different streets. So there's others that aren't reflected on this map. And then we still have the, our crews, the internal forces that do pothole repair, significant pavement repairs, et cetera, that aren't reflected on this map.
Well, it may not be a popular statement, but I appreciate the fact that a huge chunk of these roads are actually in good shape that you're putting in the maintenance program. That means we're attempting to keep the good roads good longer. And I know there's a lot of folks out there that want their bad roads repaired, but the only way we're going to dig out of this hole is to maintain the good ones and keep them good. So I appreciate the fact that you have a significant number of roads that you're investing in now to maintain that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cleer.
I probably jumped again here before we looked at the next slide, but how does this correlate with the pavement condition index? Because a lot of the streets I see on here are not on either one of these, but yet they're very poor.
Yeah, so we're looking at a three-year period, and those poor streets that have that low pavement condition index score, that's that backlog of streets that need reconstruction.
Mm-hmm.
So we're typically not doing preventative maintenance or rehab type of work. So some of those streets won't be addressed.
Until when?
Over that 10-year period. I mean, we will not physically touch every street in the city with a brand-new road over the next 10 years.
So the poor is going to get poorer while the fair is going to stay fair?
So the fair is going to be staying fair, and some of it's going to come up into a better category because we're providing some of these treatments. But that's the simple fact. The capital investment required to bring all the poor roads up to good condition, you know, we don't have the budget to support that, nor the coordination with all the other underground infrastructure that would need to be replaced over that same period of time to deliver that. And that's the importance of a pavement management program, is it, we're setting this goal of over time raising that overall condition. So that doesn't mean that, you know, we can address all those streets over the 10-year period, but we're increasing the overall quality of the pavement system in Topeka over the 10-year period. And as we continue to do this, it's a long-term thing, that reconstruction pot gets smaller, the number of good and fair roads increases, and then our overall budget dollars, provided our inventory remains relatively the same, starts to decline because we're spending more money on these types of activities as opposed to replacement and reconstruction.
And I understand that, except if I'm on one of these failed roads, I'm not going to be happy with that. I mean, what are we going to do if people can't even drive them?
We still have our internal crews that do pothole repairs and those types of activities to keep those roads in a serviceable condition.
So they'll be serviceable?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so remember, I mean, if we talk about kind of that pavement condition index, I showed you the picture of Northeast Curtis Street under the Kansas Avenue Bridge. That road's a zero on the PCI scale, but you can drive it. I mean, you can travel that road, but in that PCI scale, it's a zero, meaning that the pavement is past its useful life. Our only investment option is to replace it. And so, you know, that's just the fact.
So what's it going to look like in 10 years? It's a zero now. What's it going to be in 10 years before we even start looking at it?
It'll still be a zero.
I mean, is it going to be a minus 10?
No, ma'am.
Well, the other thing now, what you're saying, this is all being done with the money or with the excess funds from the Habsen Sales Tax, which was about $10 million over three years.
Yes, sir.
So if we hadn't received that, none of these would be done in this process. Perhaps they'd go in someplace else, but... So this is in addition to what our regular CIP is doing.
That's correct.
Okay, other thing. Other moving on, we have, yeah, go ahead. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Well, and I might be jumping the gun one word for you. You know what that word is, right? You know where I'm going, right? Right outside. What's that? You said that one year we, in one year, we patch. So we patched this year, and then the next year, we fix it. So we're fixing outside 7th Street?
The parking lots between City Hall and County, we've talked about doing a design process next year, just one, to evaluate the overall operation and then ultimately replacement of that. And we're handling that through an internal fund because that, while it's a parking lot, it's kind of separate from this pavement management system to look at. So we'll be starting a design process, looking at the parking lots between the county and city buildings next year, but we won't be making any wholesale repairs to those parking lots next year.
That's really sad because I've been sitting here 12 years, and they've been screaming for 12 years that that needs to be done.
Yes, ma'am.
So I will continue to push you, Mr. Peak.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Well, along those lines, I just want to throw in, I'm comfortable with this. You know, we want to maintain what we have so we can keep pulling up the rear. I do know that when people have called me about streets that were terrible, the one that pops to mind is 6th Street that's just now being done between Gage and Fair Lawn. The potholes were so bad, and the sides were crumbling, and people said, what are we going to do? And I've learned with, whether it's a street in my district or anywhere, is just to say, is to teach people about see, click, fix, and tell them, don't be afraid to call. A lot of times, people don't want to call too often, or they felt bad about it. And I think people are getting better about calling and seeing that there will be results. And so I just tell them, you correct me if I'm wrong, you just call as often as you take. They will come out and patch that thing until we finally get it, get to where we can fix it, but don't be afraid to call.
Absolutely.
That's really helped.
But what I'd say is, we have a process internally for potholes, evaluating whether they're priority one, two, or three. And basically, what that priority one means is that's a hazard. And so those are always going to be taken care of first. So someone may call and say, hey, I've got a pothole. We come out and evaluate it, and it may be three... We come out and evaluate it, and it may be three, four weeks before we schedule the work on that. Or it may be something that's tied to one of these larger projects, so they may do a throw-and-go with coal patch material, just hold it knowing that we've got a larger project. But I mean, that, the call, I mean, we definitely can explain that, too.
I think it's been working, was my point. And I've heard really good response about see, click, fix. Once people try it, they really like it. So I appreciate that we're getting all these pieces in order.
Okay. Shall we go to the next map?
So the next map. So, you know, this, this map here, I'll walk you through what this is showing. All these solid colored lines are projects that are already identified from 2017 to 2020 in the CIP. So the CIP that you approved this year reflected all the projects with solid color lines. The dash lines, as we run through the model, it says paver recommendations. Our model, the software system is called MicroPaver. So with that additional budget that you allocated out of the operating budget, basically generated these additional projects over 2017 to 2020. So what's important to say is, these are proposed. We've not coordinated these projects. These are major work. So this could be mill and overlay, this could be replacement on these projects. And when I say coordination, we have to think about all the different projects going on. Our utilities department has a number of priorities for water, sewer, and storm repair. So we need to look how these align and see if there's a way that we can kind of leverage those dollars to pay for joint projects. We also have bikeways, you know, other plans that are being developed within the community that have specific projects. So we need to look at how those overlap. So as we've generated this output, this Friday, both utilities and public works department are starting that internal dialogue. We're actually planning for the 2019 CIP. And so we're having this conversation internally. Here's kind of the recommendations from the pavement management system on where we need to be working. We're going to have the conversation with utilities and other departments about their priorities so that we kind of vet these projects and make sure that these are viable recommendations. And then put that in a package that comes to you through that 2019 CIP recommendation. And then some of these may be mill and overlay projects that don't require utility work, and those are things that we can go ahead and program into those operating funds that were budgeted for 2018. And so that just kind of gives you a snapshot of where we are, the planning process, and the project recommendations. And like I said, this is, it's new to everyone, so we're learning and process, but that's the cycle that will be happening from here on out with pavement management.
Councilman Emerson?
Thank you. Jason, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate this. This is exactly what you promised when we allocated the money last year to do the scanning of the roads, to come up with our pavement condition index originally, especially this maintenance program that you laid out for the next three years. I mean, it's data-driven. I mean, the way you've divided the city and made it efficient for contractors to have packages. I mean, this is just fantastic. I really appreciate this. And knowing that, I mean, it's possible we could have seven new faces up here next year. And the only problem I see is, this is a 10-year program, and the only danger I see is we have to stay the course on this. If we do this for a year, and then next year, we start monkeying around with this, we're never going to get ahead. So I guess I would, I would hope that if there's several of us still here, I guess I'd hope that we stay the course on this because we have to keep doing this year after year. That's the only way we're ever going to get ahead on this. So thank you very much. I really appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will echo the comments of my esteemed colleague. The only thing I would ask is, let's have a complete schedule. Everybody deserves to know when their road will be replaced as part of this 15, 20-year program. And I know that forecasting that far out is difficult to do, but there's a lot of people that have been in lingo for 50 years or longer with road maintenance and complete replacement. And I really think that we deserve to give them something, even if it's just a year range. You know, we're predicting this quadrant in five to 10 years, 10 to 15, that sort of thing. We've got to give some people hope out there that they are not forgotten. This is excellent work. Fabulous. This is the kind of data-driven response that we wanted to see. I would just hope that the folks out there that don't see their street on this map, you know, we haven't forgotten about you, we're working to get to you. It is very, very difficult to forecast that far out, but if we can give people some kind of indication that we're coming at some point, I think that would really go far for a lot of folks who don't see themselves on the next, I mean, five years of road work. For some people, that's going to be longer than they're willing to wait, I'm afraid. Thank you.
You know, I think an example is 12th Street, which is yellow, and it says over there, 2013 approved. So what does it mean for, has the design work been done? And reconstruction in 2013?
Yeah, kind of within the, you know, the countywide sales tax. I mean, we have a cash flow that comes in with that. And so 2019 is where that project is programmed within the countywide sales tax fund.
Okay.
And so that's going to be a very complicated project. I don't think we want to have that entire limits of 12th Street under construction at one point in time, given all the access that's off that. So we're going to start early on looking at how to phase that. And then also, like I said, just the utility coordination alone on that project is going to take a lot of work because we have some major transmission lines, both from public and private utilities along that corridor.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Councilman Hiller?
I like the three years in terms of what we can hold in our hands and talk to constituents about. As Chair of the NPO, I know that we just approved KDOT coming in at the, at Gage, where Gage goes into the interstate. And one of my flaming pothole calls was somebody who was concerned about that, I remember. You remember some of them. I think it would be helpful, even though we're not paying for them directly, if the KDOT projects could be on here as well, in pink or something, just so we have all the projects that we're expecting in those years. Just a suggestion.
Other questions? Comments? Discussion? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Very helpful. Very interesting. Appreciate it. I'll go to item B.
B is an overview of regulations pertaining to pedestrians who solicit contributions from vehicles, panhandling.
Mr. Mayor of the City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As always, a brief overview as Mr. Gagne approaches the podium. Over the last, particularly over the last probably six weeks, I've gotten a lot of calls and emails about panhandling, not only from this body, but from the public. And rather than me try to take those calls and do all that research, it's something that, an area of the law which Mr. Gagne is familiar with. So he's done some additional research into this area and thought it might be helpful this evening for him to talk through some of the things we can and can't do in relationship to this issue, and then even potentially how it relates to some of the broader issues that we have in the community. He's going to go through a number of slides for you. They're pretty text-heavy, and they talk a lot about cases from other jurisdictions. And that's important, and it sets the basis for what we really want to be, a Q and A tonight with Luther and the body. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gagne.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members, what I'm going to talk about is some of the legal rules on trying to restrict panhandling. And these slides that I have, they are text-heavy, as the City Manager said, but these are very summarized points from case decisions. And the point of this discussion, hopefully, will be that nowadays, modern times, the way the court system has addressed some of these cases, this is a real minefield to try to enter with regulations. And I know we get a lot of questions about it, a lot of complaints. Probably one of the first things to talk about, I've written, let me back up for a second, I've written this concerning medians, but these rules that I'm going to discuss will be the same no matter whether you're talking about a street corner, the sidewalk, the right-of-way, or standing in the median. The court's decisions on these cases are going to be very similar, similar types of rules. What makes a difference is in the city's justification for passing ordinance, whether it's crime or public safety, concern for accidents. It makes a difference on where the person is standing. But the analysis that the court is going to go through doesn't change that much. So the first question, when you talk about these kinds of restrictions, is what exactly is being prohibited? Right off the bat, you run into an issue where you can't just focus on panhandlers because there's other types of activity going on out there. There's charitable contributions, kids, different civic organizations, advertising, political campaigns. All of this type of activity is occurring out there, too, but we don't see it as much because it's not what people are complaining about. We actually do have an ordinance that was adopted as part of our big package of traffic ordinances, the STO, standard traffic ordinance. Out in the middle of that is a section, STO 69. And on its face, it talks about, "No person shall stand on a highway for the purpose of soliciting employment, business, or contributions from the occupant of a vehicle." Kind of sounds like maybe we already have a panhandling ordinance. I'll come back to that in a minute. The problem is, is that we can't enforce this. It's been looked at, and the legal department's opinion is, is this is probably unconstitutional. And that piece that I've got underlined there is what I'll come back to in just a minute. Couple of these cases that I'm going to talk about, the last two and a half, three years, there's been a lot of court decisions on this topic. Three of them I'm going to mention specifically. One is a Supreme Court case, you may have heard of it, called Reed versus Town and Gilbert out of Arizona. This one, Cutting versus City of Portland, Maine. This was a First Circuit opinion. Had to do with a city that passed an ordinance that basically tried a different approach. Instead of trying to limit panhandling on right-of-ways and sidewalks, street corners, they went at it by restricting people's ability to use that center island, the median. And one thing they did when they wrote this is they wrote it very broadly, that they made it unlawful for anybody to use that median for anything other than a pedestrian crossing the street. I think the thought was, at the time, they avoid the problem of trying to restrict somebody's free speech right, by picking and choosing which speech we like and which speech we don't like. So they tried to avoid that, but making it broad enough, nobody can use it. They didn't specify any specific medians. It applied to all medians in the town, whether big ones or small ones, busy intersections, stop signs, stoplights, didn't matter. Any median in town, they made it unlawful for any person to be in that median strip. What ended up happening is, when they came time for enforcement, they enforced it against panhandlers. And as, because it's a case, they got sued, how we have cases. And this is some of the language from the court opinion on it. And one of the things the court discusses is this location of a median strip, or even the right-of-way, or the street corner, sidewalk area, those are recognized by courts as traditional public forums. That's important for First Amendment law because that's a very protected area. It's an area that's been recognized by the court as where the public goes to discuss ideas. And when it comes to the government, the government's ability to limit that, we're very restricted on what we can do because of its designation as a traditional public forum.
So get rid of the court.
Now, restrictions on speech, there's two ways courts can look at it, is either it's content-based, or it's content-neutral. And it has to do with, what is the restriction, the law, ordinance, what is it trying to do? Is it based on the speaker's content, or is the law content-neutral? Content-based regulations, they have something called strict scrutiny that gets applied to those. That's the highest level of, you have speech protected by the First Amendment, and the government tries to pass a law regulating it. Strict scrutiny is at the top of the most severe restriction and scrutiny that the court will give a law because it has such an impact on First Amendment rights. With strict scrutiny, the government has to prove that the restriction is necessary for a compelling interest, and it's narrowly tailored to achieve that. That's legal language, but basically what the court is saying is that it's got to be very well-crafted, no other way to do this. This is the only way we can do it, is by passing this law. It's kind of what they're getting at. If a law is content-based, the court finds that the law is content-based, that it's restricting speech based on its content, we start out in a position where the government's law is presumed unconstitutional, right off the bat, because it's based on the content of the speech, presumed unconstitutional. And then from there, the government is, it's up to us to justify that it's necessary, that there's no other way we could do this. So a minute ago, I said that I would come back to this ordinance that we have. The part that I've got underlined here, "For the purpose of," that's kind of a big indication that we're content-based when we say "for the purpose of," because it's not all speech that we're trying to regulate. We're trying to regulate soliciting, employment, business, or contributions. We're picking categories of speech to regulate. So it's been our opinion that because of this language in this ordinance, if this were challenged in court, it would probably be strict scrutiny that would get applied to it. So we would have to show that this is necessary to further a compelling government interest, narrowly tailored, and that kind of thing. Cities have had really bad luck meeting that standard when it comes to panhandling. The other type of approach that courts uses, when the regulation does not concern the content of the speech, it says it's content-neutral, that subject, it's given a lower level of scrutiny by the court, and it has to be narrowly tailored to serve a significant government interest, leaving open alternative channels for the communication. Little bit lesser standard. Basically, it doesn't have to be the only way we can do it, but there has to be alternatives, and we have to narrowly tailor it not to be restricting more speech than we need to. This ordinance that the City of Portland, Maine, in this Cutting case, what it did is it prohibited all speech, all activity on all median strips in the city. So it looked good at first because it was content-neutral. They're not concerned about what the content of the speech is. Where it ran into a problem, though, is with the narrow tailoring requirement. The city was concerned with public safety. That was the reason why they passed this ordinance to begin with, because of people standing in the middle of the median strip. They were concerned that somebody was going to get hit, somebody get hurt or killed by a vehicle. What happened, though, was they didn't have any evidence to show that some intersections were more dangerous than others. There's a big difference between a major five-lane intersection controlled by traffic lights versus some little intersection that's off the beaten path, controlled by stop signs. There's a major difference there in the, in the danger factor. The city didn't take that into account. They just passed a blanket prohibition on everything. The city didn't take that into account, they just passed a blanket prohibition on everything. So, the court, First Circuit, when they reviewed this case, they said that it was over-inclusive, it was too broad. By not taking that, the specific location of the intersection and the traffic conditions, it was too broad of a sweep. By just banning all of them, it didn't meet that narrow tailoring requirement. The other thing that they, the city had in this case, was, they didn't have any stats to back it up. They were afraid, they had fear, that somebody was going to get hurt or killed, but when they actually looked at the data, they couldn't come up with any. Nobody had been run over that they knew of, they didn't have any major accidents or anything like that. And it was really just a concern, that something bad was going to happen. Nothing bad had actually happened. The court actually said that you can't base this restriction on that, that without the data to back it up, you're not narrowly tailored to justify this restriction. This was the summary from this opinion. In short, the city's not shown that it seriously undertook to address the problem, less intrusive tools readily available. They're also talking there about other laws being available. Instead of restricting speech, we already have ordinances for pedestrians being in the street, when there's sidewalks. We have an ordinance on that, that is enforceable. We have another ordinance that makes it unlawful to obstruct traffic. People stopped at stoplights, you know, after they turn green, because they're digging in the glove box or something for a dollar. That can be enforced as well, you can't obstruct traffic that way. So, when the court says this, but they're looking at those three things. It was a blanket prohibition at all intersections, with no data to back up their fears, and with other alternatives that they could consider on how to address this problem. Those three things, the court said, sacrifice speech for efficiency. They just passed a blanket prohibition, saying, "Nobody can use the median strip for anything." And then enforced it against people that were panhandling. This is a case, Thayer versus City of Warchester, it was a very similar type of case, it was out of Massachusetts. Earlier this year, there was an updated opinion on this. This case actually went all the way up to the US Supreme Court, and was vacated, and had to go back down to the trial court for a new opinion, and that's what this was, when it came out, was an award of attorney's fees. I put this on there, just, this is a consideration, because if the city, with the way the case law is, they pass these kind of ordinances, and they enforce them, the likelihood of getting sued is pretty high. City of Warchester got ordered to pay $519,000 in legal fees. They were asking for a million, and the court cut it in half, but still, $519,000. You have any questions?
Questions, Councilman Emerson?
Yes, sir. So, Luther, you've given us, I think, three examples of what doesn't work.
Yeah.
Is there any that, have there been any examples that do work?
There are. Putting this together, I wasn't sure how broad to make this presentation, but there are plenty of examples out there of communities that are doing it differently. It doesn't involve trying to make it illegal. It involves other things, such as educational things put out to the public about, "Don't give to panhandlers, give to these agencies that are there to help," trying to direct people that may be wanting to help people that may be out there. Some places have put out television commercials, they even gone that far. They put up signs at the intersections, directing people that, "If you want to give money, give it to this." Some places use repurposed parking meters. Some places will also have more effort put into their kind of related issues to, like camping on public property, and homelessness, and shelter capacity, and that kind of thing. It's all kind of tied together, but the approach that cities are having success with is not making it illegal, it's doing alternatives to discourage it and address the problem, rather than trying to ban it.
Councilman Jensen?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, if medians are such hallowed space, then how are we able to regulate parades? Because that is, by itself, an act of free speech as well, so now I'm concerned that there are a whole host of other things that we could get in serious trouble for.
Well, the parade is something that, it's a little different, because it's such a, you're basically taking over the street and repurposing it for something else besides vehicle traffic. So, there's, I think that's the difference there.
But I could argue a median was not designed for people to stand on and solicit things. So, we're also taking over and repurposing something there.
True.
And I realize this is a slippery slope, I'm just, you know, if we can get in trouble on one thing, people love to take a molehill and make it into a mountain. Is that something we've ever considered?
Traffic safety is one of the big areas where the government does have the authority to regulate. And within that is a category of time, place, and manner restrictions, where our interest in keeping things safe allows us to impose certain reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on how you can do an activity.
So, if we could show there was a significant danger to somebody standing on a particular median, and then we could prevent them from doing that, is essentially what you're saying?
Potentially, yeah. If we have the data to back it up. These case examples that I've shown you is where cities have passed the law, gone to court, and they don't have the data to back it up.
So, basically, people have to die before we're able to tell, or to show that it's a serio-- well, I mean, it's a serious issue.
It's silly.
It's true.
Councilwoman Clear.
So, is our next meeting on the median out at Wannamaker and 29th? How does this tie together with the camping?
Well...
That's my calls.
Okay, you want to define what you mean by camping?
Camping, yeah. Camping like in Noto area, down at the end of the street, you know what I'm talking about.
I do know what you're talking about.
It's where, if somebody camps on a, on property, not on the street, but on public, or?
Yes.
I've been out with the police, and I've seen what they're saying, and what's going on out there, and it's pretty common for the people that are panhandling to also be camping. And you don't see it as much, because they're in the trees, and they're up under the brush, but they're out there. They're along the river, they're under the bridge. But those two activities are very closely related, because it's the same, a lot of the same people that are doing it.
Okay. But what does that have to do, why can't, what does that have to do with the free speech of them camping?
Because, like, camping out on Wannamaker, they're very close to where they're doing their panhandling at. So, if you make the camping, if you address that, give them somewhere else to stay, or make that unlawful, to camp on that property out there, it's not so easy then to panhandle it, you know?
So, we can do that. We can say, "No camping here."
You can, but it's tricky, because that's tied to your shelter capacity. People have to have alternatives. And they look at whether your shelter has the capacity to handle anybody that wants a bed, and whether your shelter has rules. Do you turn people away, for reasons? And depending on what your answer is to those, you may or may not be able to ban camping in public. Because the way the court looks at it is, you essentially make it a crime for something that people have no alternative for. And if they can't stay in the shelter, then they have any other choice but to sleep in public, so the argument goes.
Yeah, if they have no alternative.
Right. You have to have alternatives. And if you have alternatives, then you can address the camping, and the camping is connected, and you don't have, it's not as easy and accessible to the locations for the panhandling.
No, but we need to figure it out, because I've gotten lots of calls about, people are upset about that.
Yeah. We have Deputy Mayor Cohen, and then let's, then we'll go to City Manager, Head of Point.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. What about just simple sign that says, "No loitering"? Could we do that?
Loitering laws have kind of had a similar fate, but for a different reason, is they're vague. A lot of those have been struck down. We don't have loitering laws anymore, vagrancy laws, some people call them, because of the vagueness problem of it. You have to specifically define the conduct of the event.
One question was, are the rules are all about the same for someone panhandling on a sidewalk on a street? You know, is that, is that different? Is that treated differently? That would be?
These rules that I've had up here, they're about the same for, as far as the court's concerned, on how they're going to analyze the problem. What changes is the government's rationale for doing it, whether we're talking about the sidewalk, or the median, or the street corner. We have a little bit different argument on the public safety aspect of that.
Okay. Interim City Manager, Head of Point.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to follow up on a comment Luther made, and have him maybe clarify a little bit, in his response to Councilman Clear. I want to differentiate between, yes, you can legally ban camping, with maybe we're not going to be able to do that in Topeka, based on the shelter that we have, and some of the options that we have for folks. So, it's legally allowable, but it's not necessarily something that we're legally comfortable pursuing in Topeka. Not to put words in your mouth.
No, that's right. What I was trying to explain was, camping ordinance, public camping ordinance, is something that cities have in other areas, in other locations. It's possible, but you have to have the right circumstances and the right community in order to be able to do it legally.
Councilwoman Clear?
So, it's my understanding that Lawrence has a "No camping on Mass Street," because they did not want to mess with Massachusetts. They wanted no camping down there, and so they passed that for that area. Can we not do that here, for like, no camping in Noto?
Potentially. I mean, it depends on our purpose, on how we are able to articulate the reasons why we're doing this, and what our legitimate government interest is, what alternatives the people have.
Okay. It is difficult, I think, as we see. Deputy Mayor Cohen?
I get a lot of the calls, too, because it's in my district along Wannamaker. The takeaway was, the median is recognized as a stage for free speech, is that what you said it was? The courts recognize the median as a stage for free speech?
Traditional public forum, yeah.
Okay. All right?
As well as standing on the side next to the stop sign, is also a public forum. Okay.
And it's not just medians.
I know.
Lots of different areas, but that's where the people are standing to panhandle.
Okay. Councilman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that's developed lately, that a number of us have gotten reactions from and seen, is people who sort of pick a corner, and they're there every day, and they have the sign every day. And we have a sign ordinance that says, you have to have a permit, just like we have to have a permit for a parade, or for demonstrating on the sidewalk. We do have an ordinance that says, if you're going to have a sign in a certain, there's only certain places you can have signs, and based on the size, this, it either is or isn't allowed. And to me, if somebody's coming every day with this sign, an angle that we could take is that they're in violation of the sign ordinance. Could you react to that? Or later, if it's something you haven't considered?
I think there's a difference, because sign ordinances, they're talking about something that's fixed. The restriction is putting something there that's fixed, and it's going to stay there, and site obstruction and stuff like that, versus a panhandler that may get up and move around, and...
Well, a lot of these people are in exactly the same place every day, with the same sign, often in the street corner, where a sign otherwise wouldn't be allowed, because it's in the site triangle on the street corner, where you can't have bushes over 30 inches tall, and you can't have a, you can't install a sign.
Right.
So...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's an interesting...
They just have legs instead of wires, or something. It's a sign.
I think the point to be taken from a lot of these is, it's really perilous for cities to try to ban things in this area, with the way the court cases are. We're asking for trouble. The cities that are having success with it are taking a different approach, they're discouraging it. "We can put up our own sign, don't give to panhandlers, support your local charity." There's cities that are doing that, and they're having success with it, because panhandling is now not so profitable. And they go away. There's not so many of them.
You know, in this discussion, perhaps sometime we might have Barry Fieker talk to us about their role with the people who are panhandling, and I, because I know, I've heard him discuss, they are a different group that usually use a rescue mission. And that gets into these of the issues, they're different people. And so, there, it is, it is a common, it is an issue. Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. A couple takeaways that I'd want the body to have. This is not meant to be any sort of all-inclusive conversation, any conversation that we have. If you think this is helpful, I would agree that we'd want him to come in. You know, we would have to include a mental health aspect, because that's a big piece of this, I think we all recognize that, and that's a contributing factor. But one of the things we certainly want to do is try to be creative. Luther's done some great research, those signs, I think, could be something that the city could use effectively, and as we move forward in our parking study. And if there's potential, we may get rid of meters, that's obviously a question to be determined, but repurposing those meters has, cities have seen success with that. So, I think it was a little bit of doom and gloom purposely, but there are some, there's some light at the end of the tunnel, and there's some things that we think we can try.
Yes, good. Okay, maybe that's as much as we can come together on this. Councilman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When Councilman Shum was in District Four, and he tried to run an ordinance on aggressive panhandling, and I remember, I don't know if you guys remember, we received a lot of flak on that. Topeka is a giving city, they're a giving city. And I had calls, and emails, and letters that said, "How dare you not allow us to give." And they were upset that he even bought this forward. I don't know if you guys remember that, but it's because they want to give. And these panhandlers know that. And yeah, there is mental illness, and yes, they know how to get by, but it makes people feel good to give. But at the same time, we do have some that are, panhandlers that are real aggressive. I've seen panhandlers fight over corners, territory, and it is really sad. I know when Lana Kennedy was on the force, we went down into the bridge, and we talked to several of them, they don't want to go to the mission, because they can't drink there. They don't want a bath, they want to be left alone, they want to, you know, so that's something that, I understand what you're saying, to change the minds of citizens, but even at that, and I thought he had a really good ordinance, but people were very upset that he would even think about bringing that forward, because they just say that we're a giving city, and we are a giving city, we are.
Yeah, I think the aggressive panhandling ordinances have been problematic as well, under these same rules, because they're content-based. They're regulating speech based on its content. And they've also had some issues with the narrow tailoring problem, because a lot of the things that they're trying to regulate as aggressive panhandling, fall under other criminal laws, trespassing, or assault, disorderly conduct, things like that. So, those ordinances, a lot of cities passed those when that idea first came out, but they've since, some of them have had problems with those. I think approach, the approach that a lot of cities are using about not necessarily trying to tell people they shouldn't give, but redirecting how they give, putting signs up, advertising, donation meters, on how people can give in a different way. And that has an effect of eventually, it makes the panhandling...
And that has an effect of eventually it makes the panhandling not so profitable.
Okay, it completes the -- one more. Councilman Hiller.
Well, since you brought up the aggressive panhandling, I encouraged a lot of people to watch tonight. And my understanding from the time before was that we do have ordinances that prohibit aggressive panhandling. And I recall that as sort of an understood at the end of those discussions before in that if someone comes forward and touches somebody or assaults them, which could be a touching or verbally, that that is still illegal in Topeka. Is that correct?
Well, that's what I was saying about our other laws that...
Understood.
Same thing. Assault, battery.
Right. But that still, if somebody goes that far, that's not okay.
Sure, right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything going? Okay. Thank you. This was our legal discourse. We appreciate it, better understanding. That completes our non-action items. We go to announcements, and we'll have Kirk present the preliminary agenda for next week.
The October 17th agenda consists of one board appointment to the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board. We have a Halloween Street Fair in Noto special event ordinance, Top City Custom Car Show for noise exception. We have an expenditure ordinance for September. Action items include a policy and finance committee report and ordinance update for Title II, Departments and Employees. And then we have a policy and finance committee report update and ordinance for Title 13 on Utilities. A public hearing and ordinance for a vacation request for BNSF Railway along Southeast 8th Street between Southeast Adams and Hancock Street. We have a project budget petition and resolution for street improvement project along Southwest 49th Street from Winnegar Road to BNSF Railroad Crossing. And then we have a Historic Jayhawk Theater Development Agreement Amendment. Non-action items include discussion on the Fire Department Strategic Plan.
Okay, thank you. Go to the deputy -- yes, interim Deputy Mayor for the Deputy City Manager.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gerber.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Two quick announcements. First, a reminder that the E-Cycle event will take place this Saturday at the Expo Center from 9:00 to 1:00. Got lots of good stuff last year, so don't hesitate to bring your electronic items that need recycled to the Expo Center this Saturday. And finally, just a comment, seeing Colonel Scott and Lieutenant back there, you know, it's always a challenging time. Not always, but it can be challenging to be a public employee. And we don't always do a good job saying thank you. And particularly right now for our police department, I think it's important to know that I can speak on all your behalf and say, "We thank you for the job you're doing and what you're doing to try to keep Topeka safe." So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Cleare.
I have nothing except congratulations on the butterfly. Very, very proud. Very proud of it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mr. Mayor, I too will congratulate you on Mr. Butterfly. I can't even get a bench out there named after me, but I'm trying. I'm still trying, but congratulations. This is my favorite month, October, because of the fire awareness that we're trying to bring. So as I was sitting here thinking about that, and I know you guys want me to shut up, but I want to thank Brenda. I gave Brenda that little piece of paper, and she gave it to her son, and he got a smoke alarm. See, she's listening. Karen got her house painted, and she had them come out, and she's got her smoke alarms. Did you have the firefighters come out?
That was last year.
Okay, so Cassandra's okay. Mr. Mayor did.
Yes, they've been out.
Mr. Henderson, nort, nort, nort.
Oh, man.
Delisa, nort, nort, nort. Dirt, nort, nort. Yes, you did. Oh, my buddy down there. So you had them come out? Because I'm checking the list, and I'm checking it twice, and I'm going to find out who's going to get burned tonight. Richard?
Actually, I do have one, but it was put in years ago, and I kind of forgot about it until I was looking up towards the ceiling, and I saw this thing sitting up there, and I thought, "That's got to be a smoke alarm." So Sylvia's been writing me all these years for nothing. So...
I appreciate your honesty, and I will have -- our fire marshal, did he leave? I will have him get ahold of you, Richard, and set up a time.
Oh, my gosh, he still has...
It's not hardwired, Richard. You haven't changed the battery.
Richard, you are near and dear to my heart, and I do not want anything to happen. And you know what? Like Mr. Jensen, don't be like him and think you know it all because, you know what? I have challenged him. He thinks he's got him. I told him, "I bet you you could use another one," but he will not take me up on that challenge because he knows I'm right. So I will have that done. And to all of you that have done that, thank you. Thank you for helping our firefighters, and thank you for helping your families. This is important. It's really, really, seriously, it's important. And I will challenge Jackie out there. I would -- you got yours? I will check that list. Brendan? Since I can't have a bench or nothing, a butterfly or nothing, I will challenge you. Tim Reicher, you're getting a new wife. You need a new fire alarm. And I will check with Mr. Martin to see. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Emerson.
Thank you. And yes, Mr. Mayor, congratulations on the butterfly garden. Hey, one day I'll have like a sewer pump station named after me. But a couple things in -- well, one's close to District 4. It's actually something me and Ms. Ortiz share. It's next Monday night, the 16th, is the project design open house for the East Topeka Learning Center at Hillcrest from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. You can come and see the plans. It's a -- should be a fantastic time. Again, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at Hillcrest Community Center. But on Saturday, October 14th, at 3:00 p.m. at Highland Park High School, we're going to have the dedication of the Highland Glen statue, which is the Scotsman and the little Scotty Dog, and fabulous Freddie Maesbooger will be there to do that, followed at 4:00 by the Hall of Fame and the Sports Wall of Honor, of which I am neither, at 4:00 p.m. So that should be a great time. So 3:00 and 4:00 there at Highland Park this Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Delisa.
Again, just to congratulate the mayor. It was wonderful to be at the event and just to hear how highly our community thinks of our mayor. I think that what you've done in our community is wonderful, and we still have till January to celebrate you. But what a great celebration. Thank you.
Councilman Jensen.
Well, I will also congratulate you on the butterfly garden. I had the wonderful privilege of going to the Jazz Fest this weekend. Oh, my gosh, what a phenomenal event. The weather was unbelievable. The music was unbelievable. Incredible crowd in downtown. It was perfect. To respond to my colleague in the corner...
David Plin?
I'm looking at you. Last year, I did endeavor to inspect my fire alarms, and I added six. But I'm very conscious about spending my constituents' money, and so I bought and paid for my own. So I understand they're free, but nothing in life is free. Somebody pays for those, and so I paid for it and installed my own. But we added six brand-new ones because you're right. When I crawled up there and looked at...
What did you say?
I added six brand-new ones.
And after that?
Manufacturer specifications do...
Because I'm right?
I didn't say that, did I?
Let the record reflect that.
No, and you are correct. And here's what I didn't completely understand was that the sensors in those actually go bad after a certain period of time. So even if you change the batteries on the regular schedule like you're supposed to, after a certain period of time, and you'll have to read the manufacturer's instructions, which are very clearly printed on how to install them and where, they do need to be replaced. So I pulled all of mine down and replaced all of them throughout my entire house with brand-new ones installed per the manufacturer's specifications.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to forego, and too much drama tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Harmon.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to join the chorus of congratulations on the butterfly garden. It was a nice, nice event, and I do want to give a shout-out to your most capable assistant, Margot, in putting that together with the assistance of Mrs. Worgast and keeping it a secret from you was really a monumental achievement. And how she did that, I don't know, but it was nice, and congratulations.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hiller.
I will simply echo those as well. It was fun. And for those who know the mayor, if you didn't happen to be there, they told him it was all about the butterflies, and he came and launched into his speech just to get us all going with all this data about monarchs and so on before he went ahead and folded it up. And it was fun. Congrats.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Ortiz.
I just want people to know that the smoke alarms are free. They got a grant, and we have to put them up or we won't. We got to fulfill that grant. And I wanted to say, there was a lot of secrets last week. I forgot to mention this. My 10-year-old grandson came home and said, "We got to see Kansas," and they took a picture with it. So how Ms. Anita's keeping everything quiet? I need to start having coffee with her because I was upset that I didn't know that they were going to Quincy and performing, and then they also had given them a raise some money for a grant. So that's really, really awesome. So she's keeping too many secrets from you, Mr. Mayor. You need to get on top of that.
I think that completes the announcements. We have one person signed to speak a public comment. Chance Lammert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm coming to speak to you as I've called a couple of you guys on this issue at North Gordon, or Gordon goes east and west, and then North Kansas goes north and south. I've been seeing a high volume of cars. The cars on Kansas Avenue coming west, you have a trouble seeing the north or the, you know, south, I guessed, on Kansas, excuse me. And then to look east and west from facing south, you can't hardly see them without being in the middle of the intersection. And I have seen multiple instances where accidents almost have occurred. And I'll start out, and I'll tell you, I've grown up in the Noto Arts District area of my grandparents, and, you know, as we grow the Noto Arts District, there's going to be more and more traffic. I spoke with traffic engineering here three or four months ago. They did a traffic study, I believe it was the September Art Walk that they put up their stuff. They told me they'd get back to me in about a month or so. And I guess it was the August Art Walk they did this. And so in September, I just kind of waited around, and now I'm like, you know, if anybody ain't going to get back to me, what is the next step that we can do? Because I'm afraid that there's going to be an incident that's going to occur, you know, where somebody could either get ran over, a pedestrian, or a car. There can be automobile accidents, and it's just a really dangerous intersection. And I would like to just bring it before the mayor and the city council to see if you guys can look into it and see if we can get any progress or something to be done at that intersection. Because I just hate to see something happening with the way the city's growing and the way the Noto Arts District is growing. And I just, I want to see it continue to grow, and I don't want people to, you know, be afraid to come down North Kansas Avenue because they don't know if they're going to get into an accident. And I've heard a lot of people, a lot of customers, a lot of businesses down there say they go through that intersection, and you know, it kind of turns them away. You know, and by turning people away, you know, that ain't how we grow an arts district. And I'll tell you, Mr. Mayor, your wife and a few others involved down there have done a great job, got us to where we're at, and now we're just going to continue to grow. And I want to thank you guys for that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Chance. That completes our public comment tonight. We have one executive session. If the city attorney would provide the parameters.
The motion is to recess into executive session for a period of 20 minutes for consultation with the city's legal counsel to discuss attorney-client privileged matters related to potential litigation as justified by KSA 75-4319B2. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present: Members of the governing body, interim city manager Doug Gerber, Financial and Administrative Services Director Nikki Lee, Public Works Director Jason Peak, Chief of Litigation Shelley Starr, and myself.
Okay, those are the parameters. Councilman Jensen moves to go into executive session. Deputy Mayor Cohen, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Nine having voted yes, we'll go into executive session when the room is closed. Quick break, short break. Let's come back so we can get out of here by 7:30, no, 8:00.